Hey, good evening, everyone. We will call this meeting to order Monday, July 10th, 2023 of the Arundel Select Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. Okay, first order of business is the annual election of officers for the Select Board. I make a motion that we elect Jason Nettle as the Chair.
Second in.
Motion by the current Chair. Which usually doesn't make motions, but that's okay.
Right.
Seconded by Velma. All those in favor? There we go.
We do Vice Chair and Secretary and Secretary.
Yep.
Vice Chair motion for Vice Chair.
Velma Hayes.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Tom. All those in favor? Congratulations, Velma.
Thank you again.
And motion for Secretary.
Tom Danlick. Bill, are you interested in holding any office? Okay, so.
By Dan, seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Here we go. Approval of the agenda. I keep wondering about that, a bunch of stuff, right?
Yeah, I think we're gonna hold off and we talk preliminary off the liquor licensing that we have. That are pending. If they hold off their licensing. Aren't.
Aren't expiring until August and September, I believe. But I would like to add the two food truck applications. I gave you copies of them. Both these food trucks will go at Vinegar Hill. So this preliminary approval is already granted, so I'd like to do that. And then we also have the three quotations that have come in for our SCBA equipment. That was approved at the annual town meeting. I'd like to add those. That's from ARPA funds, so. Like to add that those. Three things. That would be food trucks and the SCBA quote.
I added a month of general business. Anything else? Any committee board reports?
No, but I'd like to add just a quick discussion prior to executive session about the changes to the transfer station.
What's under the manager report?
After business.
Motion as amended.
So moved.
By Dan.
Second.
Second by Velma, all those in favor? Public forum. Any non-agenda items in the public tonight? Thanks. Come up and state your name for us.
And turn on the mic.
Deputy Chief Andrew Stevenson, I'd just like to give a little status report of what's going on at the Fire Department. It's been five months since I've kind of been the interim person here. So I thought I'd just give you a little update of things. Obviously, in front of you, and we'll talk about it later, you have the SCBA bids, three bids that people have spent a lot of time on. Lot of energy, so that's coming to tuition. We continue to work on radio and tower coverage. We're still researching that. We have a lease agreement with the tower company that we might have a spot available up on the tower at the transfer station. So we're working with that. So there's some research that needs to be done in that. And also, I just received some information today about possibly putting cellphone SIM cards into our newer radios. So we'll be able to use the cellphone towers. So if the transfer station tower isn't accessible to us. Because I also found out in a little bit of our research is that we already have one repeater on there, which is the Public Works Department. However, the contract states that we can have a repeater at the 150 to 170 foot mark. But Terry thinks we're at the, Public Works is at the 80. So I don't know if that was something negotiated ahead of time. And that we still have a spot available for increased coverage for our radio communication. We have poorer radio communication down Senate Road, Proctor Road, River Road, that area. And it's my goal to increase that.
Andy, those SIM cards, is it a fee that goes with those or?
Probably just like a regular cellphone fee, like $21 a month. I'm work, the T-Mobile individual came down and spoke with me today about it, came out of Augusta. With that, we're looking at possibly swapping cellphone carriers, which our iPads are connected to the cellphones. And for a cost savings of about $150 a month, $150 to $160 a month. So that's in progress.
So the repeater, is it your goal to put another antenna on that tower?
Put a repeater up on that tower, which would be at least, I think it's $300 for the year. Through some of the main communications, like what we currently do. If we have the accessibility, if not, we're gonna have to look into other avenues.
Right.
So.
What about the tower weirs? Is that full?
I don't know, and I don't know if we have access. My guess is weirs or whoever owns that property leases that to someone.
There's no contract with us on that. The only contract is a transfer station.
Yeah, we have a contract with Crown Castle, who operates the tower now. Will be at their becking to be able to do any testing or any of that, because it has to be by their personnel. But if we could do that, I think, do the testing, find out if that's gonna provide the coverage that we need. That'd probably be the cheapest option versus us increasing our tower or something like that, or building a new tower on itself. We started in the process. Again, we appreciate all the support that we've had throughout the years. We're starting a truck committee and not in the opportunity to purchase a truck tomorrow or the next day. But in a year or two, because it's a two to a three-year wait to get a fire apparatus. And we'll be close to the 25-year mark for one of our trucks. Our idea is to combine two trucks into one. With that, there's, as we all know, there's been inflation costs across all industries. So I just want to give you a little facts and figures that I received today from a manufacturer. And if you want me to do more research, I'll get the actual numbers from the Fire Apparatus Manufacturers Association, which takes into account all the fire apparatus manufacturers. But this particular company in '22, the increase due to inflation was 32%. 20% is expected in '23 and 24% in, excuse me, 25% in '24. Prior to COVID, it was 6% to 10% annually. So yeah, significant increase. So I just want to put that on the radar screen, like the longer we wait for replacement of trucks, the exponential cost that it's gonna be for this.
Did they quote you, what was lead times that they quoted?
24 to 36 months. So, and that has been consistent from, I spoke with one, two, three, four manufacturers. So that's an industry. With that, during town meeting, we were able to be awarded an ambulance. That contract has been signed, and that is due in March of '24. That was a down payment for a demo ambulance that occurred, I believe, in '22. To secure that, a demo ambulance bid spot. And we're not gonna take delivery. That's two years out with the Merz ambulance.
So if it was a demo ambulance, why are we, why do we have to wait until '24?
Because it was a demo build slot. It's not that it was already built. So what's happened with the fire apparatus and ambulance industry? Is because of COVID and some places shut down for a couple of months, everything got delayed. From engine being manufacturers to transmissions, the pumps and all that. So it created significant lag time for everything. And then a lot of the bigger departments went ahead and ordered more trucks than necessary. I say, I put that in parentheses, because of the significant lead time. So it's put all the manufacturers behind. So like, let's say you had a bigger city that typically orders 10 trucks a year. They decided to order 20. Because of the significant delays, in anticipation that three years from now, they'll get all 20 trucks and they'll be on par where they need to be. And with inflation going up exponentially, with the signing of the contract, they're locked in at that price point.
But I was under the impression that this was already built. That's why it was a demo.
Nope, it is not already built.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood that. I thought because it was a demo, it was something that was already built.
Nope.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. I know we talked about this.
Yeah, the demo, I think, as I think Andy is pointing out, it's just a slot. If they had availability, it would have been a demo being built in that slot. Now that we've locked into it, they'll build our truck in that demo slot.
Right. Okay. So, and this is a total shift of the whole system, right? The idea of buying a demo truck, no different, is what you're thinking is proper. The truck was already built. Because of COVID, that messed everything up and delayed everything. So a lot of these dealerships, they ended up specking a demo truck. Could be a fire truck, could be an ambulance, just to hold that built spot because of the significant delays that were created.
So it'd be March of '24?
Be March of '24.
That's not that far away anyway.
No, eight, nine months.
Yeah.
Supposed to be built at the, either late January or early February. But, and we'll take delivery probably in March. Maintenance report, all our apparatus are in the process of receiving annual maintenance. We've also decided to undercoat our fire apparatus and increase the longevity of those. It's $500. It's coming out of our operating budget, but just to increase longevity of those as well. We have a Medicare audit. We've requested an extension. It was just brought to my attention about 10 days ago. There's a lot of work. It's gonna take numerous hours to be able to do this. So Wendy has been of great assistance with this, so she filed for an extension. Some of this information was, I don't even wanna say information, access to this Medicare audit was locked down. So. Job app, I mean, job postings gone out. We were afforded the opportunity for another full-time employee. We are losing one full-time employee as well. He's going to another department and he's gonna stay on as per diem. So right now, we're in the process of hiring two full-time employees. The idea is that they'll be onboarded late this, late September or early October. The ad's gonna be open for, until August 15th. We're gonna, the deputy and other, the other deputy and captain. We're gonna set a interview date within two weeks of August 15th. We're gonna do the interviews, give job offers, and do the physical. And give them opportunity to give their two-week notice at their current employer and get them onboarding ASAP.
When the leaving, when is that individual leaving?
He starts his new job July 17th.
So basically, he's gone.
Yeah. But he's gonna stay on as per diem. So he'll work, he says, between three and four 24-hour shifts a month. So we've got a lot of open spots due to that vacancy. So that ad includes full-time and per diem. The RFP's been done, should be posted on the MMA Town website. Been a week, we were awarded a RFP for an exhaust system. So there's no more diesel particulate that's gonna get into the station. That was through FEMA. It was an award of around $51,000 with us matching 5%. So that RFP was submitted to Wendy today, and she's gonna be getting it on the MMA website and our website as well. We're gonna have a RFP for new exterior doors. Hopefully, that can be posted in the next two weeks. And we're looking into a new medical director. Someone that's local, a little bit more active than our current medical director is. And it's gonna be a little bit of a cost savings for us as well. So that's about where we stand right now at the Fire Department. Lots of iron stolen. So, any questions?
What's the one you're on the code? What are you using?
We're using New Hampshire oil.
The new stuff doesn't have, and it works really well, it protects well. But having a person that has to work on that.
Yeah. Yeah. That's probably New Hampshire oil. But the people that are working on the trucks right now are putting that on. So for our maintenance, because we don't have a town mechanic, all our fire apparatus outside of the Ford products are going to Northeast Fire Apparatus in Auburn. And then our Ford, so the ambulance and the brush truck are going over to Arundel Ford for maintenance. But 44 has been done, 42, 40 have all been up. Received their annual maintenance, 46 and 48, 46 goes up on Monday. And then we'll swap out with 48 and have everything done by, hopefully, the end of the month.
So. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Approval of the minutes, June 26.
Make a motion we approve as submitted.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil. All those in favor? No committee and board reports. Mr. Manager.
Yes, just give you a little bit of information relative to what's going on at the transfer station. Been monitoring it quite extensively. A couple of issues that we're now experiencing. The first one is folks thinking that they can come down to the town hall and get reimbursed for their punch cards. I spoke to Casella, as I indicated, that we're attempting to work out an arrangement with them. So the punch cards can be used for other costs associated with items that need to go to the transfer station, i.e. mattresses or demo equipment, electronics. And they are, I got word tentatively today that they're on board with that. So we'll make that known to residents as they come in. And again, tell the Casella staff that they shouldn't be sending people down to the town hall to get a reimbursement when that has not been done. I gave them a litany of information for Saturday that I was hoping perhaps went out. That litany of information indicated that they should be observing everybody with a sticker on their car. If they, or their vehicle, if they do not have sticker, they cannot dump. And what I heard today by a couple of people that came in is that the effort made by Casella to check stickers wasn't very fluid over Saturday at all. In fact, I heard that, you know, one person may have been assisting, somebody was sitting in a chair and not really helping out as much as they should be in terms of ensuring that the folks that are coming there are getting, you know, are there because they are residents or have the right to be there. So an issue that we need to try to clean up with Casella. I would think that what now has to transpire up there would be far simpler for their staff in order to ensure that folks are depositing their materials in the right place. They don't have to hit any, they don't have to punch any punch cards. They don't have to make a determination of what people are throwing away. They just need to ensure that they have a sticker. So that seems to be one of the issues that we're presently dealing with. In terms of the new stickers, they have been ordered. We expect them in. I'm hoping this week, once they're in, we will then begin providing them to the residents so they can have the new sticker. And we will honor the old stickers and the new stickers until September 1st. At that point, everybody should have a new sticker. If they don't, then they can't dump, so.
So the new stickers are gonna have like a date on it?
They'll have a fiscal year date on them. So every year, people will have to come in and say you register your car in August. Or whatever, maybe it's in December, and we have new stickers, then you'll get a sticker.
So what's the old sticker? I know I have an old sticker, but I don't have it on my windshield. I got it on my dash. I got that years ago, a couple of years.
You should be blue in color.
Okay.
If it's blue, then you're okay.
Okay.
And you should be putting it on your vehicle.
I will. If they don't check it.
Yeah, we're gonna require that they be put on the vehicle. That way, they don't, because the new stickers will have the registration on them. So they'll be, they'll be vehicle-specific. So still a work in progress. And I appreciate any comments or thoughts that you are experiencing when you're traveling up there. I went up there Wednesday. I think a little more effort by the Casella folks is warranted. And I'll make that known to the powers that be at Casella.
Yes, Mr. DuBois, do you have a question?
So I might as well talk about what I wanted to talk, that's why, I didn't even notice it on here. I don't know why, but.
Jason even pointed it out to you.
Yeah. I don't know. Anyways, I was there last Wednesday. And first of all, there's been a lot of talk about this on like the Arundel chatter. And folks are generally very pleased about it, very happy about it. So it's been very, it's been positive. There are a couple of comments made on, well, how much did this add to my taxes, blah, 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 this and that. Or if Casella is doing the local ones, you know, that why can't we do that? You know, and I mean, I replied back that that was an option we looked at, but it was just way too expensive. But it's been pretty positive. I don't know if you've heard anything out there, but I know that everything's been positive. I went Wednesday, and after I had registered some things here, the girls had said, hey, they're, they're telling people to come here. So I went over and flipped the sheet and handed it to the guy and said, don't send people to Arundel Town Hall for a refund. Those stickers aren't done yet. I know, we haven't decided it yet. Okay, okay. And then somebody comes along and hands him a card, and he says, you need to go to Town Hall and get a refund for that. So, but I think it's been pretty positive. So I think it was the right move. People are generally happier and certainly makes it a lot easier, so. We did the right thing.
Well, we'll certainly have to monitor it. I, I'm concerned now about folks that aren't residents or don't have the right to be there. I want to make sure we clean that up. And the mission that Casella has now really is pretty straightforward. If you got a sticker, you can dump. If you don't have a sticker, I'm sorry, we can't help you today. And it's as simple as that. So hopefully, that message gets out there.
So for the folks that don't have a sticker, that are residents, what do they do between now and the time that the stickers come in?
They can come down and get an old sticker.
Okay.
We'll honor the old stickers until the new ones are here.
And I'm sure that's gonna be a question.
Right. So if they don't have any, matter of fact, we've had people come in and they've asked about it. We, if you don't have a sticker, we'll give you one. You'll just have to come back again and get a new one when they're available.
They have, like ours, we have a pickup truck. So if the sticker's on the front of the pickup truck, Charlie pulls in and backs up. They don't go around to the front of the truck to look to see that we have a sticker.
Well, they're certainly, they're certainly gonna need to. And, you know, I don't think there's gonna really be a reason. Again, I think it's the mentality that everybody's been pulling up and backing in. If we could get them just to pull up and throw their trash, that would be the best solution for everybody. Because then you're flowing right out, and it doesn't take you very long to throw your trash and to continue on. So maybe something that we can sort of influence the public to try once again. Because it, I remember the last time we did that, it wasn't very successful.
I have one other thing. Charlie came back. Apparently, he was talking to the person up there from Casella's. And that person said to Charlie that he would love to have it open one more day or even have it closed on Saturday and have another day when they'd be open until, you know, like six or eight o'clock at night for people. Because he didn't like working Saturdays. I told Charlie, I says, just tell him he has to go back to his boss for that one.
Right. Yeah, the next thing I have is just an update on 159 Proctor Road. As of Friday, it was closed upon. So the Baldwin Home buyers now own the property. And we'll begin the process of working with the code officer to get it cleaned up and get it back into the, you know, some sort of condition that we all would prefer it to be. So I haven't been down, I didn't go down today, and both Jim and I were busy this morning. So we didn't get a chance to travel down to see if the former residents have vacated the property yet or not. But hopefully, according to the gentleman I spoke to, everything went well on Friday. So they're ready to move forward with the project down there.
So the property got bought off?
Property gets sold, yep. Purchase and sale, it was also, it was transferred to Baldwin Home. Well, Laura Lane is the company that actually purchased it.
Good.
Yep. So, yeah, so I think it was a, for us, a positive result in that, in that we avoid outstanding costs that would have been associated with that. So hopefully, these folks continue to move on, and Jim and I will keep an eye on that.
Well, great.
Well, we, yeah. I guess we could have probably put a lien on, but we didn't. We didn't. And I think we've got about, I want to say about $4,600 invested in that at this point. It was something that we probably should have thought about putting on a lien the minute we had that assessment. Then we got paid off, but we didn't.
Yep.
All right, good news. Looks like we have three planning board appointees and one budget board.
Yes, right now, I'd like to have a reappointment of James Lowry, Paul Green, and Marty Kane to the planning board. And John Bell to the budget board.
Any individual discussions on any of these candidates, or can we just do them as a group?
You guys find? I would prefer you do them as a group. I got them all on one sheet, and I'll just send it on down, have you sign it.
Make a motion we approve as submitted. James Lowry, Paul Green, Marty Kane, and John Bell for the budget board.
All right, motion by Dan, seconded by, seconded by Tom. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
I'll send it on down. You can sign it. Thank you.
Have you heard any more from Susan yet on? Have have you heard any more from Susan yet on what she asked?
Uh no, I have not. Um have not heard. The the next appointments are um to. Support appointments that are made by the manager to confirm them. I'm bringing forward a a plethora of names, obviously, for the for that. Um and it should be on your the sheet uh that I provided to you. The the one that I would like to. Uh make mention of is uh is that I'm making a recommendation to to uh place Andy Stevenson as interim fire chief. Uh for the time being, until we have a final determination from um. From uh Chief Bullier as to his status moving forward. Uh we still don't have that. He's still out on uh medical at this point until at least September one. Um is is as I understand. So I have uh. Uh animal control, the assistant A G uh animal control. Uh building inspector, code officer, electrical inspector, E M A director, interim fire chief. Uh foyer officer, health officer, plumbing inspector. Uh registrar of voters, the town clerk, and the tax collector.
So we're still. Now we're down even more, right, for the fire for the fire department, because we have one individual that's leaving. And then we still, we're still down.
Right, you don't, you don't have in uh uh a part-time fire chief. That position is. Um Andy and the rest of the uh officers have been sort of filling in and I think uh. Uh his report tonight's indicative of the effort that's being pushed forward uh by the department at this point. So. Yeah, we're still down, but they're filling the shifts.
I don't have any issues with Andy's doing. I think he's doing a great job. My concern is we're down a person.
Yeah, we're filling, he's filling shifts and as much as he can. And obviously during the during the summertime. We lose a lot of people that would normally um occupy shifts. So some of our full timers are getting forced. Uh to cover shifts and that's just the nature of the of the of the game at this point.
Well, I need a motion for these appointments, so. Motion by Velma, seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Unanimous.
I'll send that on down for some signatures. Thank you.
I do have a question. We don't have an assistant treasurer?
No. Um we, well, we do have a deputy treasurer. Yeah, we do. The deputy treasurer is Lisa Denner and technically by. I'm I'm the treasurer by by uh by default, by position.
All right, we've got a code of conduct select board.
Yes, I um uh I know that uh several meetings back, you had uh spoke relative about this and I updated the. The select board code of code of conduct to reflect. The term select board as the as opposed to selectmen in. In lieu of that, that's all I did to this code, which has been in in effect and it appears since you adopted it in twenty uh seven.
I find, first of all, on line one, it says a town select board. It shouldn't that say a town select board member wants sworn into public office?
Yep, it should. Any other changes that you can see?
When did we incorporate?
Thank you. That would have been a while ago.
I'll make a motion we um accept as amended.
Motion by Dan to accept the updated select board code of conduct.
That's fine. Uh what I'll do is I'll update the sheet and bring it to your next meeting so you can sign off on it. Because on 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 even on page two where you would be signing that the the heading up top needs to be corrected.
All right, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? We'll sign it next meeting.
Yes, correct.
Uh review of our current fees and recommended updates.
Uh yeah, this this was put together um uh through the land use office. Providing um some some changes and I can I can tell you, they put a lot of work into try to come up with the numbers that they have here. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to to look at it. Um. It it's not exorbitant in any way. Um as I understand by talking to the land use folks is that it's. Pretty much in in line of what other municipalities are presently charging. Uh for these uh services and for these permits, so uh not sure if you wanna. Have representatives from land use come in and chat with you about it prior to any changes, or you want to take a look at it a little bit longer. Uh before you approve any changes, whatever is the pleasure of the board.
Do we know what surrounding towns, we must know what the surrounding towns charge.
Well, I I believe they used the surrounding towns as part of their process when they reviewed this, right? If if you'd like, I can get it, get a report from them as to what they looked at and who they saw, but in essence, um. This was uh effort that was made by by them.
I wouldn't mind having a discussion with them. We we had made mention before about like impact fees. On subdivisions and. I don't necessarily think that's a bad idea. I, it seems like every road in Arundel is getting a subdivision put in it right now and.
We ran into issues with that, didn't we? By doing that, we couldn't. Yeah, there were issues. We we couldn't do impact fee. I don't remember what it was, so but.
I remember that vaguely. I was just looking off of public works, I.
Do you want it, do you still want them to come in so I have a good discussion on it? I can have folks from the planning office come in?
I know other towns do impact fees, so I'm just curious how they handle, like what are they doing with their fees? What, you know?
Well, I mean, that's certainly, that's something we can add after, right? I mean, we could, we could ask the planning office to look into what. Impact fees are, what they're doing locally.
I'd have to, excuse me, I know that Lijia gave you a full report on that and uh. I'd have to uh dust that off again. I know it's in my office somewhere in terms of uh the process and why he was reluctant to recommend. Impact fees.
I do remember specifically that it couldn't go towards like personnel. That, but. I'd like to have more information if it goes towards like equipment. Do you remember?
Yeah. Well, it's your pleasure. Mr. Chairman, do you want him to come, want him to come back and have a little more discussion on it?
I wouldn't mind it, yeah. Just to get a little bit more information.
Okay. And you want to table these uh these uh changes until after we have a discussion?
Up to the rest of the board, but I I, my two cents is if we could, if by any way we could include an impact fee. I don't know if we could add that later, like amend it or. Vote on this as is and then amend it if we can, or?
You can do all of the above.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we vote on these as as amended and then if we need to amend it to include an impact fee later, we can do that. At least this gets the ball rolling on some of the increases.
Yeah, so if you look at what it used to be, like for subdivision for minor, it used to be fifty dollars, just for the sketch plan. Now it's up to two fifty. Um the final plan went up a couple hundred bucks, so there's definitely some improvement. Improvements there and then even the major, same thing, right? So. And lemonade plan used to be seventy-five dollars. It went up to a thousand bucks, so I think. And that, again, that must be based on what surrounding communities are, so. I mean, I'm I'm confident that what the planning office did for this is good and. I would be, we have made a motion on this yet, have we?
No.
No, so I'll make a motion that we um. We accept these fees as submitted, um but we continue to look at uh dig into the impact fees.
All right, motion by Dan. Seconded by Velma. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
That gets us down to Mr. Chairman to uh uh the the two items that we added before we get to payroll and and payables.
Oh yeah, let's do the food truck.
Food trucks, yep. Uh you you have two food truck applications. Um. Uh once again, uh one from uh Son of a Bun. Evidently, they weren't um, they weren't able to to uh be at the food truck. Everything, the weather. Uh forced them out at uh at their most recent one, so they weren't there and they would like to. Not only come back on the uh Sunday the sixteenth, but also would like to have you transfer. His twenty dollars that he already paid to be used at this request for an application, so. First, I think, first, I think you you decide whether or not you're gonna accept the application and then, secondly, whether or not you're going. To uh waive his fee because he already paid one for a function that didn't take place. Twenty dollars.
Keith, our copy, the licensed. Copy is just, you can't even read it. It's your, is the original? Can you actually see his license and?
Yep, I have his license.
All right, looking for a motion for Son of a Bun. Tomo. Will your motion include waiving the fee?
I'll do this. Uh we'll do it all together. Motion to accept Son of a Bun and uh we'll waive his fee.
Waive the twenty dollar fee?
Yep, Shane, he's already paid it.
Motion by Dan.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Velma. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor? One abstention.
Well, that's right. Keep forgetting.
Why?
Trying to recall if um. This requires a signature or just your vote? We'll see it on the application, so. I think it's just the vote. We don't have the application, yes. The the next one I have is uh uh Don Miller um. For Crepe Elizabeth is the name of the company. They're they're going to be on site at um. At Vinegar Hill for uh July twenty-third and August twenty-seventh. So they're requesting uh both dates and they have paid their fee. Um the information is provided i- in your packet.
Hey Keith, just a point of clarification. Like under license review and permit?
I'm just reading that.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
It it says uh board of selectmen shall schedule a public hearing. Does that have to be done every time we vote them in or?
No, I don't believe so. I look at these a little bit different, seeing that approval has already been dictated by the planning board for these locations at Vinegar Hill.
It's just clearly outlined, board of selectmen shall schedule a public hearing on every.
Just gonna ask that, because that's what the ordinance says. But in in the. Um approval for Vinegar Hill, they had a public hearing on all of that stuff, so and and in their plans is a special spot for.
That is correct, right. So that whole process for location and everything was completed. I mean, that's probably why I didn't I didn't place it on there as a public hearing notice initially.
I make a motion that we approve um Don Miller's Crepe Elizabeth food truck application for July twenty-third and August twenty-seventh. At Vinegar Hill.
So motion by Velma.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. And what was the fee on this one? She's two weekends, so what is, is that double?
Forty bucks, yeah, yeah. It's already been paid.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Dan. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
Well, if they, if they do a seasonal one, it's two fifty. So, yeah, yeah, it um, this is just. Right.
Um all right, let's do S C B As before payable. So we've got three quotes.
We, yeah, um I think Andy, I think Andy can probably fill us in a little bit more. I know that they they had a committee. Andy, why don't you tell them a little bit about all three of these uh bids, particularly in in the decisions that were made by the by your group?
So. We reviewed all all these manufacturers. So the manufacturers are Drager, M S A. And uh Scott. Um M S A is represented by Bergeron, Detective Clothing. Scott's represented by I P S and um Drager is represented by H S E. We spent countless hours going over this. Um limited participation by the people. Uh just because of time commitments of uh department members and that type of stuff. Uh but the consensus was to go with the Drager pack. It seemed to be uh most ergonomical. Regarding uh weight distribution onto our backs, uh serviceability. They offer a fifteen-year warranty, which is comparable to the um. M S A pack, the Scott pack was only a ten-year warranty. But we don't need to do any special training, um out outside training for maintenance, which is required by Scott and M S A. The the uh Drager pack is a very simplistic pack. We're gonna be interchangeable with our bottles, with our mutual aid communities. Um because that was the one parameter that I put out, was that I wanted us to be interchangeable with our mutual aid communities. So we're all gonna have the same connection, um even though we're going with a different manufacturer. Um so as you see, the price points are um M S A, one thirty-eight seventy-seven, one. Uh one thirty-eight ninety-five for the Scott and then one thirty-one five hundred for the Drager.
Sixty-five hundred dollar difference.
When you're saving from what was originally quoted, we had a hundred and forty-five thousand, it was, uh, set aside for, are for money. So we're saving about thirteen thousand five hundred of that money, uh, to purchase this.
And these funds are coming from the state of fund.
Correct, these are our funds.
Yep, hopper, yeah, so I make a motion, we approve the, um, as recommended, uh, the quote from, um, H S E for the Drager systems at a hundred and thirty-one five hundred.
All right, motion by Dan to go with Drager. Seconded by Phil, any more discussion on these three items?
Yeah, I have a question. I know I've always heard with the fire department, everything with Scott air packs, Scott air packs, are other companies, are other departments using this system?
We're, we're the only one that, in the area that's gonna be using the Drager pack, so we all know the fire service.
Yeah.
Okay, it's tradition, um, so you're, you seem to be a little bit familiar with the fire service.
Yeah.
So, uh, it used to be Scott, everybody used to have Scotts, now everybody's converting to M S A. Um, and with what we saw with our Drager, um, we were more than impressed with what the Drager had to offer, um, regarding serviceability. I'll give you an example regarding serviceability, um, I work full-time in Bedford, uh, the M S A pack. They sent guys to a two-day class, but they, um, didn't end up buying the maintenance kit, which, which is an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, so we don't need any of that with the Drager. Drager is the number one S C B A manufacturer globally, um, whereas Scott and M S A are specific to North America, um, so Drager's been around for a long time. Um, there are some departments up Maine that are, are going to Drager, will be the first one in the area. But again, inner, the ergonomics of it, the ability to, uh, disassemble the pack and wash any concussions off the pack is very simple, I've worked with the Scott packs. Um, it takes about twenty-five minutes to disassemble the straps off it and, uh, put new straps on. With this, you can do it under five minutes, um, the M S A, I, I've never taken the straps off and I don't even know if we can.
Yeah, okay.
How about durability, I mean, it's, it's being sometimes simple?
Yep, a- and again, they're the number one manufacturer, so they, I think they've got it down packed. Uh, the durability is just as well as everybody else. Um, they're, they're N F P A compliant, they're OSHA compliant, um, uh, not, not OSHA, excuse me, uh, N I H compliant. So, which is more than I can say for, uh, M S A and Scott, which are just N F P A compliant.
So we've got a motion and a second by Dan and Phil.
Yep.
Uh, no more discussion on this, all those in favor of going with Drager? What was opposed?
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right, now I need approvable, approval of payable and payroll. Motion by Velma. Second, seconded by Dan, all those in favor? And I now need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, four oh five six eight, discussion on a town manager's contract.
Uh, motion by Dan, seconded by Phil to go into executive session at seven fifty-five, all those in favor? Thanks for coming, folks.